I have the right to declare of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next Board of Selectmen meeting will be Monday, November 18th, 2019, at 5:30 here at the town office. Also want to announce that, to remind people that the municipal and referendum election will be on Tuesday, November 5th. That will be at the West Bath Fire Hall. Polls open at 8:00 and close at 8:00. And everybody should vote. Reminder also that we've set the date for a meeting with the auditor, with the school board, and the Budget Advisory Committee. Then that will be a workshop meeting, November 19th, at 6 o'clock. And that will take place at the Fire Hall. Is there public comment? Seeing none, business item one, the Energy Committee report. Mr. Tennyson?
Not report, just to get the okay from the board if the committee talks to different people in companies about other possible solar projects for the town, common sense projects, and fiscal returns to the town, such as having people look at town law to see if they would fit a solar project at all.
Oh.
Okay, just want to know if it's okay with the board to proceed with those.
We're not even getting this done. Would you want to motion?
No.
Is our say-so okay?
This time, yes.
Yes, please, please do. It would be interesting to see what we, what kind of savings we might regroup and what kind of environmental impact we could, we could have.
We get some of those solar mail on top of those coal-fired gates.
You think so?
Yeah.
There we go. Don't have a sound fixing on right here. And we, item number two. We have a concern about roadwork on the Rock Road. Do you wish to speak to that, Christine?
We received a letter from Attorney Terrio asking us to take care of some issues on property owned by Trotter. The letter is included in the packet along with some pictures. And I invited Mr. Terrio to speak on behalf of the issue, if he would like to do that.
Yes, Mr. Terrio?
Yes, thank you for inviting us. I appreciate it. I don't need to be very long. It's pretty well set out in the letter. There are three issues after this roadwork was supposedly completed. One, which is very serious in our opinion, is that the property marker was displaced and never put back in its proper location. That has to be done by a surveyor. The second piece is that the scope of work seems to have encroached on their property. Apparently it was roadwork for the town that was subcontracted, as I understand, or contracted out. Obviously, in order to do work on somebody else's property, you have to get permission or an easement to do that. It wasn't done in this case, but it looks pretty clear that a substantial amount of work was done on their property. And third, the way it was left was totally unsatisfactory. And you have some pictures that indicate what some of those problems are. So we'd like the selectmen of the town to address those issues and see what we can do to take care of it.
Do you have specifications as to what is desired?
We'd like it put back pretty much the way it was before the construction. I mean, it was grassed in front of the Trotter's house on their property, and the shoulder was grassed. The property across the street was grassed after the construction was completed on that side of the road. So we simply like to treat it the same way as the property across the street was and that the pin be put back.
Okay.
Okay?
The last paragraph in his letter lays out what they're expecting the town to do to amend the situation. When I talked with Steve Reno, the contractor for this project, he indicated that he didn't believe that was an actual survey marker because it wasn't capped. I don't know if that's the case or not, but it was, he didn't believe that it was an actual survey marker. I didn't know. Perhaps he wanted to send Ron down to look at the property and survey the property, or if he wanted to take some other action to see if an independent third party thought the roadwork was adequate. Or if you wanted to just digest it for a while and let me know later. There is a picture of a pin.
Yeah.
Steve didn't think it was a survey marker. The black and white pictures aren't very clear. Let me give you the colored ones. They're so much clearer.
And where's the pin you were referring to? Is it in these pictures or no?
I believe it's in one. You gotta look for it. But it's clearly a survey pin.
You want to give us that hint somewhere?
I don't know which pictures you've got.
Can I take a look?
Yes, please.
May I approach?
I'll try to do that. I think it's in the glasses.
Let's try to do that. Is that where, where the pin was replaced?
No, that's where he put it back. That's not the correct location.
Okay, where do you think the?
I'm sorry, I don't know yet. This is another shot of it right here.
Yeah.
This is where it ended up, ended up getting stuck after we removed it. Initially stuck it in here somewhere. It's clearly not covered. And this shows you what was left there after construction.
Oh, I think that's why it was deceiving.
What?
It's not like one I've ever seen before.
But it's ours, like most of them.
Yeah. But that's about it. I usually see them much more in the ground than pulled up.
Well, sometimes they'll leave them. Well, that one was just stuck in the ground like this. It wasn't bounded down. And I think it's a fairly old marker, probably before the surveyors were required to put caps on them.
We have in the past, that's Ron about to do, surveying whether the town would agree. But I wonder if we would make an exception to this.
That might be the simplest way to rectify the situation or determine where the pin or a pin ought to be placed.
We would not object to Ryan doing that.
Who did it before?
No idea.
They told me they had people that did it before.
They've never had it done.
I don't think they've ever done it.
Well, the pins have been there. There's a map that shows them.
These pins that were in there were bent rods bent over. They were not even survey pins. And there was...
I'm not going to argue with you, Steve. The pins are both corners in the front.
Yeah.
They're not where they're supposed to be. But one of them isn't.
That one's at the area now because when we did that ditching. So I believe where you found me was pins are in our right of way.
If we can, let's, let's have Ron take a look at that.
Yeah.
That seems to be the simplest one on that. And it does seem as though...
I think we should have Ron go down and survey the road from the center line. It's a four-road road. That road is a lot wider, and we got a lot more room to work with there.
I think that would make good sense. As far as the restoration goes, I think...
Is this the other side? You were talking about the other person's driveway that was escaped?
I can tell from here.
Is this across the street?
I believe that it is.
Okay.
Well, wait a minute. Let me ask the expert. Do you know, is this across the street? Yeah. And that one?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, actually, it's a sound.
Right.
And can you tell me which, which, what I'm looking at here?
This is the front of their yard with the current location of the pin.
And from, from what angle am I looking at?
From there, approximately their house.
Okay, so this is what, if I was standing in their, in their front yard, that's what I would see?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. And you, your, your understanding is that the, that the actual right-of-way extends further?
Yeah, well, I talked to the only guy that's done any surveying. I've done some research on this. Nobody had any pins before. I knew Dalton when he owned the place before him. And it's Paikat. He got his survey so he could get a road put up through there. Those are his pins that were put in there. And he said he weren't even sure. He just been measuring by tapes, and he's got a pin on the corner there. So as far as us moving somebody's property pins, we didn't, we figured we still in the common right-of-way where that is, it's even a four or five-road road. And we're not, there's a lot of room. So these pins, they're seeing, and they're seeing where they were. It's not even on their land.
The pin was moved, excuse me, the pin was moved so if we went to sell our house, half of our house would be on somebody else's land. That's how much it was moved.
So I think if, if you...
We're just concerned about the pin.
If you're agreeable, then let's have, have Ron take a look at the survey.
Yes.
Yeah, if he, if he finds out where that pin is supposed to go, and I think he will, then that will determine how much work has been done on their land and how much has been in within the road. And then we can deal with the issue of what the, what the property looks like.
What, what are we working on, working on their land?
The question about whether or not enough restoration was done on the...
There was no seating, so I think...
So that would depend...
They asked for all the extra dirt. I stuck it on their lawn, brought it up. They had a big, big mess there. And they asked me if they could have that fill, and I even leveled it for them. Now they're complaining? Wow. I saw you write, guys.
Let's do one thing at a time. Let's deal with the pins first and then what kind of restoration will be part two.
Okay.
And maybe we need to talk about what we're going to do in the future. We don't leave dirt on. We take the dirt away? Because I've seen, this isn't the first time for the mission.
Okay.
But we can't. As a town, we get ourselves in a lot of trouble by doing extras. So I think we need to stick to the basics.
There's no more given any fill away and so either, because that's just, he asked for that fill, and I put it up on this thing, and I even took the extra time to jot it out and level it for them.
I think in the future, we may want to discuss a policy about what happens when we move dirt.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so part one, we'll have Ron take a look at, at the survey and, and see where he thinks the pins should go.
Yeah.
And then we'll deal with part two, depending on where the line turns out to actually have been. Does that work for you?
Yes.
That's a good first step. And then we can go from there.
Right, okay.
And I'm happy to share whatever information we have with Ron.
Okay.
He knows where to find me.
I'm sure he does.
Yeah, I mean, the deed calls for a boundary marked by an iron pipe.
Okay.
So let's call for it, Dean.
So Ron, Ron will have that information?
Ron will know what to do.
He, he surveyed a thing or two.
You're there.
And I'll have to ask Paikat who he got because he's got reference points on both sides of that.
Sure.
It's clearly a survey description, so a survey's been done.
I think that would be Ron's job.
Right.
All right.
Right, so we'll, we'll turn it over to Ron for the time being, and then go to part two when we find out what Ron has to say about where the mark is.
That sounds fair.
Okay.
We look forward to hearing from Ron.
Okay.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number three. Update on the Rockley Road. You have a follow-up conversation?
Yes, I met with Benell Hubel last Monday. And we discussed their concerns about the personal property that was taken from Rockley Road. They're not looking for any monetary consideration. They were disappointed in what transpired. But they're okay and accepting how things are at this point. So they're not looking for anything from the board.
That's right.
Yeah. They just said they're planning on making some changes to the property, and they're looking forward to working code enforcement, going through the process of when they take out building permits and start doing their work down there.
Well, I dare say whatever they decide to do will undoubtedly be an improvement.
Yes.
Is there other other? As the Board of Selectmen? I have no other. All right. Then we have some abatements to consider as we act in the capacity of the Board of Assessors.
And I'm expecting Ron, if he's not here already. There are, you each have a packet under your binder.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there are abatements for homestead exemptions. Ron went ahead and put several homestead exemptions on one of maintenance so that you could just sign one copy. There are veteran exemptions that were missed, one personal property item, and one building that was valued incorrectly. So we all have a total of four forms that will need to be reviewed.
Hey, Steve.
Hello, just in time.
Just in time.
Do you like your puppies?
Yes, I do. They burst them now.
There you go.
Well, you guys obviously don't have no questions really.
There's really not a whole lot we could do at this time. I'm wondering...
Right, yeah.
No, we'll deal with the surveying issue first.
Yeah.
We'll go from there. Go home, get your supper.
What we did kind of there is what had to be done. They put their, they planned that during it. They did all kinds of stuff over the years there. So I don't, everything we did there was a big improvement. They're laying, so I don't understand it. Yes, that's what people don't understand.
Well, let it work its way out.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks for your efforts.
Oh, and but, one more thing. When we get done, the guy come up with a plot back to me and give it to my son. It's a great job. Just thought I would fill that in.
All right. So we're starting at the end of our workday.
Got it. Nobody comes out at the end of our workday. Not at the moment.
Okay. All right. So who are we looking at first?
Looks like you have the personal property first.
Okay, that's what that is.
Yeah.
Oh, Wells Fargo.
Well, it's I, right?
All right. So...
Well, most of, most of their personal property is at the corner's.
Okay.
They had two accounts because they had property in someone else's too. And they keep sending me stuff for account 145,
Oh, yeah.
which I took off 142 because the description of the property was from 142. And then I went to the archives all the way back to 2012. And it was clearly 145 and 142. But they kept getting the bill from 145. So I kept telling the guy. I said, it's not 145, it's 142. But either way, we looked at it and he said, well, he says, you know, all the, all the stuff is on 145. And I said, well, a lot of it is. And you know, a lot of it is. And I said, well, you know, it looks like that there's some of it is on 145, and that's why you got a bill 142. The reason you never got a bill because it was always Betty, under Betty. And that's the reason why. So he calls about every day I'm in. And I kept convincing him that he had the accounts mixed up. I thought we did. So whatever was on 145, estimate and close out 145 and tell him everything's going to be 142 from now on.
Okay. Just going forward, so that just have them on account.
That's going to be 142.
Okay.
Because there's more stuff on 142.
Okay.
So that's 78, that was 95 cents.
Okay. Why don't we take these one at a time? So on the recommendation of the assessor, then I think we should grant this abatement. That's a motion.
On second thought?
All in favor? Here we are. We can hold off on the signing
Yeah.
and do those all at once. Then the next one I have in the list is Dampel?
Dampel, yes. Okay, this was, this was, and I show you on the cards what the mistake was. This has been in there a long while, since 2007. Thirty-four on, on the big part of the building, thirty-four by 25. And I looked at the picture like, like the, once you come and see me. And I said, well, I said, you know, that's fine. I said. And then I looked it up on, on Google and measured it, and it's 21. So I said, go down and measure it. I think it's 21. And she come back and said, yeah, it's 21. If you want to go measure it. I said, no, I don't need to measure it. As you can see, I changed the card on the next page.
Okay.
And so she'd be an assessor, she would be an assessor for a bigger cottage than she's got. And that abatement is for $124.95.
And you're recommending the abatement?
Yeah, because she doesn't have that cottage. She's not that big.
Okay, so this was a problem from, from vision?
From vision, yeah. She's paid her F P E, but there's nothing to do about that. She has to be brought to my attention first.
Right.
And so I corrected it. Now it's correct. And it's a hundred and twenty-four ninety-five.
I move the approval of this abatement.
On second thought?
All in favor? The next, the veterans exemption?
Veterans. There really isn't too many of those. I wanted to thank Calico for putting them in order. They were scattered all over the place. And she's done a good job putting them in order. Thank goodness for that. But so that abatement would be in their legitimate reference to everybody that didn't get it and should have got it.
Okay.
And one of them on there in particular, I picked it up and looked at it and then I did it twice because I looked at it. And then nine looked like a hole. 2014 instead of 2019, that's a tough one. And then I realized that they really looked to 19. They just, they just didn't do a good job. Good. There were other requests too, but there was two others I denied because I didn't finish up properly. So that comes to $315, being $63 each for the veterans.
Okay.
And I think the state's going to pay half of it anyway. So I want to do the D V A, M D, Municipal Valuation Return. The number will be corrected, so we'll get money back on all of those.
Okay.
And probably it's going to be 50% of what that is.
Okay.
So it'll be around $155, $160 for the actual abatement.
Okay. Move the approval of the abatement just recommended. Second? All in favor? And?
And again, finally we got these straightened out too. Found them all over the place. I thought it couldn't happen in the movie. It could have done anything. It was, the girl was kind of a messy man, so. These would be the, the homesteads.
Okay, so this, this was just missed in the preparation?
Yeah, that's all. The total abatement would be $1,680. The state will pay half of that. Again, the D M B will, M D A B will pick up our share when we figure that in. So we're just out what we got.
The recommendation? I move the approval of these abatements.
On second thought?
All in favor? Okay.
I've got three still pending. One of them, I was going to come in today just wanting to do it. And that was for Paul McHale. They had called me, Nick Beck and not, and said they no longer are business staff. Therefore, there's no personal property there. I corrected it in vision. However, it didn't go through.
Didn't translate to trio? Didn't translate to trio?
No, no, so that one will be coming your way. The other two would be a new house, at the time I assessed it, I didn't go into it because it was just a shell. And that belongs to Jim Pearson down in Sabino. And he made reference to a lot of new houses that he felt his was higher. And the only way I can do that is go over and assess it.
Yeah.
The last one will be the guy that got the bid for Lavondes. He bought a lot up in Pellegrini. Pellegrini was paying, what he bought it for, he paid $180,000 for it. And the deed was made on Florida, it's kind of screwed up. And it's got the water on the east side, the middle river on the east side, and it states that it's a waterfront lot, which it wasn't before. Pellegrini had taken a lot on shore in front of it and did a amendment to the subdivision, which was really signed off by the planning board. Ellis had kind of okayed it, he wrote it, wrote it, it was okay. I had a question about the road, because roads aren't supposed to be part of the subdivision. He included the road and therefore he gave the road to the guy who, the same guy that bought Lot 2, which he's going to put a new house on there. He was very, very upset about it. He knew that Pellegrini had been paying in taxes and went all the way back to 2012. And he was paying a lot more and then I looked at some of the subdivisions and I said, I think I cussed it a little slightly at that time. And I said, you know, we can reduce it a third. All subdivision lots are a separate map, because the, the map goes through the law, else they become lots, they assess separately. So I took the third off, he had been paying it like a third less for both lots all the way through. And he thought that he should be paying what Pellegrini was paying on it. But if it's a waterfront lot, which it states it is in the deed, then obviously he, and I can't understand this guy, because I know him. He's got to know because he knows that, that the Lavondes lot itself is a small lot on the water and that's being assessed at $282,000 just on the land. So he asked for quite an abatement off based on what he thought Pellegrini was paying. The only problem is I have with that is a legal issue. Is it really a separate lot? Was he allowed to combine it with the other lot, even though he did it in the deed? Because usually when you do that, you require a subdivision amendment, and no amendment was ever done. And again, you, you, in, in a subdivision, you, you can't make the lot, the barrier of the road as part of the lot. It's a non-cabaline lot as it is, Lot 2 is a non-cabaline lot, it's 2.6 or 2.7 acres. And even if you add the piece out in front of it, which would be a piece on the water, it's still going to be less than three. So by law, it automatically combines. And I tried to tell him, I said, if Pellegrini had just left the road alone, kept the road in there for himself, then it would have been divided into two lots, it would have been divided, not public, private road. But I said, he purposely, he purposely added it to make it a waterfront lot. And that's what I've got to try to explain to him. The other thing is, I don't think I'm wrong with this, but it's possible that I may ask you, let me go to an attorney, the attorney that deals with subdivisions. The only thing that I could see that I could be wrong with is the fact that that lot is a separate lot because it's part of a subdivision.
See, David, reducing that lawyer fee.
We shouldn't need a lawyer.
Well, I, I certainly would, would, if I do this, I think I will talk to him first, explain where I'm coming from. If I do this, I would prefer to go to somebody I have a lot of faith in, I'm here. If it's a subdivision, maybe one of the attorneys in town, I don't know, probably David King, I go to David King's law. And he's, he's a good lawyer, but I would ask him first if he's aware of subdivisions. That is the issue, is it one lot or is it two lots? I still think it's one lot at first. But if, if it wasn't a subdivision, it would automatically have been combined because it's a non-cabaline lot. But where it's a subdivision, it could be considered still as one lot, even though he should have, he never should have given the road to them.
Right.
He never should have given up the road. You can't do that with subdivision.
Well, if there's a problem with the subdivision, then we need to figure out what the legal status is on the subdivision first.
It could play into it though.
So it sounds to me like, wouldn't it be his responsibility, I mean, he values it and he doesn't agree with it? Isn't it the owner's responsibility and not Alice's?
He's, yeah, I would think so. I mean, he's, he's going to, I mean, if you've talked, you feel very confident, I think it's his-
I explained it to him, but I, I just had to, we're off the wall and, and I don't know why, because he's got the law, he's got Lavondes lot and that, the waterfront lot alone is like a $2,000.
Well, when you don't have, do you have an official request for the abatement at this point?
No.
So when he gets that, then you bring, I think-
Oh, no, he has, he's, he's asked for an abatement, yes, he has, if he has signed and asked for an abatement.
Okay, so he's, he has-
But it's way out of the way.
He has, he has submitted his request to you then?
Yeah.
Okay, so I would suggest that when we meet in November, you bring us the, you bring us the request and we'll act on it.
Okay.
On your recommendation and then we'll see what happens.
Okay, that sounds, sounds valid.
Your, your recommendation generally is the way that we-
Yeah, it is.
We generally support the recommendation unless there's a, a compelling reason.
There is no compelling, I still feel it's, it's more along, even though there's a little bit of legality there. I, I feel that, I mean, if it was, let's say it was a subdivision, an old subdivision, and you bought one lot and it was a non-cabaline lot and you bought a lot next to it. And let's say both of those were corner area lots and in that particular area, the new lot would be one acre.
Right.
There was, by law, they would automatically combine.
Right, because that would make it closer to a cabaline lot.
That's right. However, if there's a building on one of them, that's a different story. But in this case, there's no building on either one. But in, in all that's valid, one on the water can be built on anyway. At 75 feet, once you get 75 feet, you're on the other side of the world.
Okay. Well, I think it sounds like, it's, it sounds like your decision was appropriate and let's, let's take a look at it and make an action and see what happens.
Yeah, okay, and we'll do that.
So the next meeting is the 18th of November?
Yeah.
So we're going on down.
I'll study a little more and if there's anything I can find out different, then that's fine, but you can see where I'm coming from.
Yeah, and I, I would agree with Kathy that if he wants to appeal, that's on him, not, not on us.
I will have a copy of the deed so you can read it too. I'll be, you can read it and see the mistakes made in the deed.
Okay. That will be it.
Laura?
Yes? I have a question about the homesteaders exemption and the veterans exemption that you referred to.
Yeah.
With, do the individuals that are asking for the abatement, do they have all the documents in according to the timeline that is set forth in the town?
Yeah, they did, yeah.
They did?
All the way across, yeah. Absolutely. Believe me, if they didn't, they would be getting it.
You have to wait till next year.
Next year, it's going to be $25,000.
I know.
Man, we're going to get hit.
I'm looking forward to it. And the veterans.
Now, which side of the table are you sitting on?
Yeah, I mean, the other thing is too, the, the amount of real estate valuation out there, who knows and everything, it's going to help us a lot too next year.
Yeah.
Well, the state is claiming to cover the full amount, aren't they? For next year, right?
I think they have, I haven't read it, I got, I got a copy of it up there, but I'm not ready for it.
Just come over somewhere else, really.
If they cover it in a full amount, on computers or something like that.
That's true.
They're in the process now trying to determine how they will ease the burden from municipalities. Yes, really is some information I have on that.
Yeah, you stop figuring, I mean, I don't, you know, the, you know, mill rate is very low. So it's not really that nice, where you take somebody in Bath, apparently, holy moly, that's a lot of money. When you add that big mill rate in there.
Yeah. Just pocket change for us.
Okay, is there other other on the, on the assessing? Then before we go into executive session, I would like to make note that Peter Osaretko's term has come to an end and that having chosen not to run for election again, this will close our chapter with Peter. And I'm sorry you couldn't come this evening, but now that, after the election, I can call him and talk to him directly and thank him for his service to the town, which has been considerable, both from the planning board and nine years as a selectman, including two momentous events in the community life. The dissolution of our relationship with RSU1, who was instrumental in that and that contributed greatly to the success of the town and having that taken care of and the settlement. And then the disposition of the wing farm was also a good deal of what Peter accomplished. So recognition is due and as soon as it's legal, I'll call him. So, thank you, Peter. And that said, I request that we enter into executive session pursuant to Title I of the MRS, Section 405, 6A, for the purpose of discussing personnel issues. Have a second, second? All in favor? Thank you all for coming.